Everybody ready? Good evening. Welcome to the November 20th Stillwater City Council. I call the meeting to order. And we have a very special guest tonight. Her name is Gracie McLennan. And if she would come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then everybody would join us by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading us, Gracie. And, you know, before we can let you sit down, we have to ask you some questions. What grade are you in?
Uh, fourth.
And where do you go to school?
Crabappalene Elementary.
And your favorite subject?
Math.
Love that. And now I ask you what your favorite thing to do after school or, you know, things that you do to have fun, and you said...
Eat.
Eat. And so I accept that. I do. And I asked her how many hot dogs she could eat, and she said she doesn't like hot dogs. And I said, "That's probably a good thing." So, anyway, okay. And my final question is, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Um, I want to be a singer or act.
I love that. This is a good start, then. See, you're getting your exposure. You just never know. Councillors, any questions for Gracie?
What do you like to eat after school? Anything specific?
No, I just like to eat stuff.
And it's nice you can admit that. You know, when you get older, you can't really admit that. It just shows.
Do you like to cook, Gracie? Do you like to cook?
Uh, yes, I do. I like to bake.
What do you bake?
Uh, cookies.
Does your dad eat them?
No.
No.
Sometimes he does.
Okay, I'm gonna come down there, and we're gonna take a picture.
Okay.
We have a few proclamations. The first one, the first proclamation is about local small business. Whereas the city of Stillwater celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas small businesses employ 48 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, 33 percent of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants. Whereas 91 percent of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently owned restaurants is important. And whereas 76 percent of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses part of their holiday shopping. And whereas the city of Stillwater supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so this coming Saturday, a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, do proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday. And all of us urge you to shop local. Stay off the computer and get in your car, or walk to downtown and shop. Or anywhere in Stillwater. We don't, do we have anyone for this? Okay, okay. I think we have someone for this one. I knew I saw you in the audience, I just didn't know where. It's Ms. Lou Watkins. Whereas, the Reeds Across America Project supports an annual December tradition of donating, transporting, and placing Maine balsam fir remembrance wreaths on the graves of fallen American soldiers. And whereas, this tradition started 25 years ago with the placement of 5,000 wreaths on the graves of fallen soldiers buried at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas, Reeds Across America has placed nearly 4 million wreaths on the graves of fallen soldiers buried at Arlington and at cemeteries in all 50 states. And whereas, the mission and work of the Reeds Across America Project to remember, honor, and teach is recognized annually by resolution of the United States Congress. And whereas, on December 16th, 2017, Reeds Across America will honor fallen soldiers with wreath laying ceremonies at Arlington and at over 1,200 cemeteries in all 50 states. And whereas, local civic groups will be conducting these activities at Fairlawn Cemetery in Stillwater on that date. Now I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, do, on behalf of myself and the city council, commend the efforts of Reeds Across America volunteers nationwide and declare December 16th, 2017, as Reeds Across America Day in Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you all very much for this and also for your service. I have really appreciated Mayor Noble's service. She, her first public message as mayor was to the Fairlawn Annual Meeting, and we have never forgotten that, and we're gonna miss your service. Reeds Across America will be December the 16th. We need people to help lay the wreaths at Fairlawn. We'll have a service at 11 o'clock. It's gonna be magnificent, short, but it will be very moving. And then after which, we will ask everybody present to help us lay the wreaths on anyone who has ever served in any capacity in the military. And so if anybody is watching this and has someone buried at Fairlawn who served in the military, and it's not on their headstone, we need to know that, so we don't wanna leave anybody out. And so we just appreciate very much your service, and we thank you for this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor.
Lou, is there a contact number if they wanna volunteer, or if they want...
Yes, ma'am. At reedsacrossamerica.org on the internet, or you can give me a call, our number's in the phone book, or my email is lou, L-O-U, at westwatkins.com. And I'd be happy to hear from anybody who would like to donate their time or donate some resources for it. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I need to say, you thanked me for my service, but we certainly thank you for all of yours.
Yeah, this is Sally Smith. Sally is our finance chair, and she has done an amazing job to raise money. The wreaths are $15 apiece, and Sally's done an amazing job. We have over 1,297 veterans buried at Fairlawn. Almost 1,300 veterans. I think by the time we hear from folks, I think we'll have over 1,300 people that have served in the military buried at Fairlawn.
Do you have enough money to buy all of those wreaths?
You know, we are very close. We are so thrilled. Sally and her friend Debbie Hodgson have done a magnificent job. Debbie here has walked the cemetery four times, the 44 acres, trying to find graves that we have missed, and every time, she has found some. So if any of you all have people buried at Fairlawn or wherever, then you would like to participate in this, let us know. And we have, thank you so much. We have pins for everybody.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the consent docket. Councillors, does anyone wish to remove an item or have something clarified? Or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. That brings us to item five, public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. And I would like to remind the audience of the rules for public comment. Speakers are limited to speaking about a specific item on the agenda, and only those who are signed up to speak will be allowed, and each speaker has three minutes to address the council. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address. Never mind. Scratch that. I have to go to another agenda for that. Sorry. Thank you. Seeing if you're on your toes. And you are. All right, that brings us to public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding a request for closing of a sewer line easement at 1710 East Sixth Avenue, CC-17-158. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Paula Dennison, our Development Services Director, has that report.
Good evening, Paula Dennison with Development Services. This is a request for closing an easement located at 1710 East Sixth Avenue. What you see on the screen is the property in question outlined in the purple. You can see the pale lime green easement cutting across this property. There's currently a sewer line within that easement, only serving this property itself. The request is to close this easement. They will be vacating it and abandoning the sewer because they're gonna redevelop the entire site. This is the old hatchery, if anybody knows, out on East Sixth Avenue. Here's a picture. This is Sixth Avenue where the car is, and Payne Street on the east side of the property. So this is the entire property. The sewer easement to be closed and vacated is running behind all of these buildings. Any questions for me at this time?
Councillors? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing, but we don't have anyone signed up, so I will close the public hearing. And... Is there a recommendation?
Yes, staff does recommend approval of this request to close that easement.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna open the public hearing again. We do have a speaker. I'm very sorry. So I am going to open the public hearing and ask for Stephen Guss to come forward. I'm sorry about that.
Stephen Guss with Guss &amp; Associates, 113 East 8th. Just here to answer any questions. Like Paula said, our client's trying to clear it out so that they've got a bigger footprint to deal with. Sewer's not serving anything else, so we'll cut it off and use it if we need it, and if not, close it in, so.
Councillors, are there questions for Mr. Guss? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing and ask Ms. Dennison to come back and say the recommendation one more time.
Staff does recommend approval for this closing request.
Councillors, are there any questions for staff? Is there a motion on the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote. And CC-17-158 is approved with a vote of four to zero. That brings us to item B, receive public comment regarding a request for closing of a utility easement at 1824 West University Avenue, CC-17-161. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
And Ms. Dennison has that report as well.
Thank you. Once again, this is a closing request for some property. You can see it outlined in the dark purple. There's easement coming into the property along the eastern boundary. The portion to be closed is this piece that bisects the rear yard of this property. It is not used. It was originally intended for a sewer. The owner of this property, he is here this evening, and he would like to further add value in the backyard of the property. He's got a couple of accessory things that he would like to do on that parcel.
Councillors?
Any questions?
Councillors, questions? Is, at this time, I will open the public hearing. There is no speaker, I promise. And I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Ms. Dennison for the recommendation.
Once again, staff does recommend approval of this closing request.
Councillors, questions? Is there a recommendation? Or is there a motion on the recommendation?
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation on CC-17-161. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, it is approved. It brings us to item C, receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow an electronic message center on property addressed at 1506 East Sixth Avenue adjacent to a residential district, CC-17-159. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Our Development Review Manager, Lance Gross, will be providing that report.
Thank you. Good evening. Lance Gross with Development Services. The specific use permit before you tonight is located at 1506 East Sixth Avenue. The subject site is surrounded by the purple line, the boundary, and the existing zoning for the site is CG Commercial General. Commercial General also is on the east, west, and south side of the property. The property to the north is zoned RSS, single-family residential small lot. What triggers this specific, what triggers this use or this application is the fact that it's adjacent to a residential use or zoning, anytime an electronic message display sign comes before us. The location of the sign will be at the bottom left-hand where the purple circle is. This is a view looking to the northeast. You can see the existing sign right here. That sign will be removed, and the new sign will be put in this place. This is a view looking to the southeast, showing the location of the sign. And this is an elevation of the sign. Sign's approximately 20 feet tall. The static sign at the top is approximately 130 square feet, and the LED sign is located right below, which is approximately 24 square feet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councillors?
You specified the height for the sign. Is there a, because it is a lit sign, is there requirements for how much light or how bright it is? Is there a way that we can make sure it's not this glaring spotlight that when you're driving on the road?
Yes.
Are there requirements for that?
Yes, there are requirements, and a certain time of day toward the evening, it has to be reduced to a certain level as well. It's all based upon the city code.
Any other questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing, but we don't have anyone to speak, so I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for the recommendation.
City council recommended approval of this item by a five to zero vote.
Okay. Councillors, any more questions? All right. Discussion, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Motion to accept. Second, second.
There's a motion and a second to accept, CC-17-159. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, CC-17-159 is approved. Item D, receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone 602 Southwest Street from the CG PUD Commercial General Plan Unit Development District to CG Commercial General, CC-17-160. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
And Lance will make that presentation as well, Mayor.
Thank you. This item is located, the map amendment is located at 602 Southwest Street. The hatch mark with the purple boundary is the location. It's currently zoned CG PUD, Commercial General Plan Unit Development. Let's see. Uh, let's see, the PUD was originally established to alter the setback requirements, the parking requirements, and the use requirements. In 2011, when this application came before Planning Commission and City Council, the church use was not permitted in a CG zoning district. The church is located over here at 601 Southwest Street. The original intention was to expand the church to the south, and they needed to alter some of the setback requirements and also the parking requirements. And they own both properties. This property is the only one under consideration tonight. This is a view of the site looking to the northwest. There's a playground, open space, and an existing building that was used as preschool and Sunday school. Any questions?
Councillors? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and we do have a speaker. Mr. Guss.
Same thing, just different project. Stephen Guss with Guss &amp; Associates here on behalf of the applicant. As Lance stated in the report, there, the church is moving out to Country Club in McElroy? Get them wrong. And so they're just trying to open this up, because there's not gonna be a church or church parking lot, in this case, of the putt built on that lot, so trying to clear it for anything that will happen in the future. So just here to answer any questions.
Councillors?
This would go back to Commercial General?
Correct.
Which binds up with everything else around?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask staff for the recommendation.
Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve the item with a five to zero vote.
Councillors, are there questions? Motion?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission recommendation, CC-17-160. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, CC-17-160 is approved. That brings us to resolutions. Resolution number CC-2017-20, a resolution concerning the city of Stillwater's bridge inspection responsibility pursuant to national bridge inspection standards and notification to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation of bridge inspection consultant selection for bridge inspection contracts commencing April 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2020. Councillors, discussion. Mr. Dorman, is there anything that we should...
Not really. It's just, it's just basically an announcement of who the city's selection would be.
Okay. Councillors? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a sec, second to adopt the resolution, CC-2017-... 20, sorry. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, it is approved. That takes us to ordinances. On second reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3388, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1503 South Perkins Road from RSS Residential Small Lot, Single Family District to CG Commercial General District.
Discussion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3388. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance number 3388 is adopted. Brings us to item B, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3389, an ordinance rezoning tracts of land addressed as 402 and 504 South McFarland Street, 2011 and 2021 West Fourth Avenue, 2002 to 2015 West Fifth Avenue, 401 to 523 South Willis Street, and 2006 and 2012 West Sixth Avenue from RSS Residential Small Lot, Single Family District within the Westwood Conservation Neighborhood overlay to P Public District.
Councillors, discussion, questions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3389. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, ordinance number 3389 is adopted. That brings us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Anything to report tonight, ma'am?
Mr. McNichol?
Yes, ma'am. Appropriate that you named Saturday Small Business Day. That's what I'm about to say, that with the holiday season here, we'd like to remind you to support our local businesses and shop local this weekend. Shopping local supports vital public services, including public safety parks, streets, and more. I've recently written a couple of editorials calling on Oklahoma lawmakers to pass a strong online sales tax bill. Our local brick and mortar stores are currently at an 8.813% disadvantage before they ever open the doors. And many of the online retailers are not required to collect and remit sales tax in Oklahoma. At the moment, only 170 of the top 500 retailers collect sales tax, and there are literally thousands of online retailers. You can read those articles on our website, but please shop local. Support your local government. Support your local business people.
Please tell your neighbors the same thing.
Yes, and that money turns over here locally civil time, so.
It's actually fun, too.
Yes, yes, it is. I did my part this weekend.
It's actually probably better shopping than, you can see it in person. Please support our local people.
I'll go way off script here and tell you that there are various places around town that if you are shopping, there's a citation validation program, not just downtown and other areas, where if you get a citation for overtime parking, you can take it into a merchant, and they will validate that citation for you.
So you can shop as long as you want?
You can shop till you drop.
Oh, boy. All right, you heard that.
Duly noted.
Okay. Councillors, more news?
Well, I have one kind of related. CFO Melissa Reams said the city received its sales tax on September 2017 transactions that were remitted to the Oklahoma Tax Commission in October, and a portion to the city this month. The amount totaled a 0.25% increase from year-to-date collections. However, the amount is under budget by 1.19%. See if we can do better.
That starts with shopping local, right?
Yeah.
All right. Councillors, a noddy.
This Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, most city offices will be closed. Offices will reopen Monday, and what is it, about shorter weeks? That seem to be the busiest. It's crazy. Trash and recycling will be picked up as scheduled, however, yard waste will not be collected. So your trash will be picked up this weekend.
Councillor Joyce?
I have one completely different than what we've been talking about. We'd like to encourage our residential waste management customers to use their city-issued glass recycle totes for monthly collection. In the beginning stages of the curbside glass recycle program, customers were allowed to use their own boxes for glass recycling. I actually used one I had in my garage from a previous place I'd lived, which I use now. But evidently now, the waste management team would ask customers to use the city-issued tote to maximize confusion and ensure regular pickup. If you don't already have a tote, like me, there is no extra fee to request one. Glass pickup is for customers inside the city limits only, and you can contact Utility Customer Service for more recycling questions.
Thank you for telling on yourself.
Yeah.
And there's no shame in it. At least you recycle.
That I could use the one I had, so I've been using it.
You recycle. So I'm going to talk to you about cooking, and many people cook this time of year. And we'd like to remind everybody about disposing of fats, oils, and greases. When grease becomes solid, it will stick to the sides of sewer pipes and clog them. This can cause a backup and overflow in your home or into the streets and streams. To avoid a serious maintenance issue before cooking, scrape fats, grease, and food into the trash, and use sink strainers to catch in empty food into the trash.
Or my family, we just have that big mason jar that sits on the counter.
That you dare someone to drink, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn city council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the City Council meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, City Council is now adjourned, and we're going to go to Stillwater Economic Development Authority next and to call the meeting to order. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove or clarify an item on the consent docket, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Consent Docket is approved. That brings us to number five, general orders. Mr. McNichol.
We have a quarterly report from the Chamber of Congress, and Justice Mendez will provide that report.
Evening, counselors.
Good evening.
So we have a handful of leadership Stillwater folks in the group. I'm a little bummed that we didn't have a whole lot of public comment tonight and drag this thing on for three hours to give them a good taste.
How'd you plan that?
Well, it's all up to you now.
Well, I brought my copy of War and Peace, so there we go.
And there is, I think, some kind of basketball game tonight, so...
I'll keep it brief.
I'm just teasing.
Noted. So as is customary, you receive the Excel format of all of the metrics as well as a copy of what we'll discuss today. I'll go through a few of the highlights, and then if I can, I wouldn't mind showing just kind of a couple pieces of our new economic development website that hopefully we'll go live with in Q1. So RFP activity remains high. For the quarter, we had 27 requests for proposals received. Of those 27, we submitted responses to 14. And as we discussed in prior meetings, the reasons we don't respond to some of those is we just don't meet some of the criteria, whether it's a location to a major airport like Will Rogers or a location to I-40 and I-35. So there's some of those that we get weeded out just off the top. We have 20 projects that remain active. So of those 14 that we received, some of those are still active as well as some ongoing from previous quarters. Some site visits, so the fun part when we get the RFPs submitted, hopefully they get to call us and we get a date to the dance, and so we got one of those this past quarter. Rebecca Eastem and I, on the 13th of September, were able to present to a company. This is also a really fun one because, as you guys have heard me in the past, sometimes the cycle is protracted on some of these RFPs. We might hear nothing for nine months. This one was opened and closed within probably a four- or five-week period, so it was very condensed. It was us and a few other communities. The reason I mentioned it was because we were commended, and in your notes there, the actual site selector, in their response back to our regional partnership in Oklahoma City, highlighted our community and our community only. And so if I may, because I like to brag on us a little bit, I'm going to quote from the email. It says, "The company..." And I redacted the names because I'm under a nondisclosure agreement, and I'm told that when you violate those, attorneys don't like that. "So the company was extremely appreciative of Oklahoma's rapid turnarounds, given their requests in an ambitious timeline. Consultant thanks you all as well, as this was very helpful with our cost modeling efforts. The company specifically commends the Stillwater team, as they were especially impressed with the professionalism and creativity employed to support the project. Overall, Oklahoma certainly puts its best foot forward. The company is looking forward to partnering with Oklahoma in the future as it contemplates additional business growth." So I thought that was pretty cool that our community was specifically highlighting. We also, over the quarter, had a mock RFP process that we participated with. Paula Dennison's team, as well as some more utility partners, GRDA, broadcast it out to all of their communities. The highlight is our submission package, which is definitely a partnership with the utilities, as well as Paula's group and Trenton, our wizard when it comes to cover letters. On a scale of one to five, we actually scored a 4.55, and we were one of the highest rated out of all the 13 or so communities that participated. I wasn't able to make the presentation, but Trenton tells me that our cover level was also used as a best practice to the whole group. So we're pretty excited about the good work that we're doing on that. One Million Cups, you probably have seen some of that on social media. I know some of you have attended. We're really excited. We've had two events now. It's the first Wednesday of every month, and so the 6th, December 6th, will have another rendition of One Million Cups. For those of you that don't know, it's a product of the Kaufman Foundation and courage to provide a safe space for entrepreneurs to tell their story, share their story, and the community to love on them and ask them questions and see how they can support them. Ours is a little different than other communities. We have two speakers. One is a Main Streeter, kind of brick and mortar. We've had 1907 and District Bicycle. And then the other speaker is some sort of a high-tech or high-tech manufacturing. And so we've had Midos Solutions, which is a tech transfer out of OSU, and then MaxQ, which is doing some really cool stuff. So if you can make it, we'd love to have you on December 6th, 8:30 to 9:00. Some networking and coffee. Program kicks off at 9 o'clock, runs for no more than an hour. We get you out and on your way. Jingle Bells is currently underway, so the Shop Local Campaign. It's the annual drawing that we do. I'll mention there's one change to this year. In the past, we've given just cash $10,000. This year, we're breaking it up into two components. Still one winner, $7,500 in cash, and then we're requiring them to do $2,500 in vouchers or gift cards to the participating businesses. So hopefully, and that drawing's on the 18th. Yep, and so hopefully we'll kind of force that back into the system before the Christmas holiday. So the drawing will be at the community center like it was last year at 5:00 or 5:30 that evening on December 18th, which is a Monday. Finally, a couple things to look for in the future. One, the Edge, the entrepreneurship ecosystem that we've been talking about. Justin Hazard over at Meridian is working diligently to get a landing page and a website structured on that one. And then Trent and I are going back to school next year, and we're getting our certified Economic Developer Certificate, so the CECD, which will be really cool because Doug Major, I'm bragging at my boss twice now, basically, Rebecca and Doug Major and Justin Hazard are going through the process right now. So hopefully those three will have their CECD by the end of next year, and then Trenton and I. So to have five of those in our community is significant. There's usually only five or so or a handful of those in a larger community like Oklahoma City, so our community's in good hands. I guess finally, before I go on to this, we got preliminary bids. We're going to start moving dirt on our land north of town, so you know that we own 65-ish acres on Airport in Perkins. The Perkins front edge is owned commercial. The other side of the train tracks is owned industrial. We've got bids, so we're going to be embarking on a $1.5 million investment in the community. So if anybody's looking to buy some land, give me a call. I've got some available. So hopefully we're going to turn some dirt in January for that as well. Questions before I go to the website?
Counselors, trustees?
What is CECD?
Certified Economic Development Certification.
What does that mean?
I think I nailed it.
What do you learn?
Okay, so there's many facets to economic development, right? So this class is roughly 18 months or so. Unfortunately, it's through OUEDI, and so we're going to have to send some of our Stillwater money to that place down south. But it teaches you all the facets of economic development, so anywhere from site selection, site planning, site certification, financing packages, so incentives, both local, state, and federal, as well as marketing, how to present a website, marketing materials to attract site selectors, I mean, on and on and on from there. So it gives you a more in-depth training program on all of those.
Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully I don't... I'm the most un-millennial millennial, so technology gives me fits. Let's see what we can do here. So the website I'm going to show you is our... It's in our staged site right now, so not all of the pictures and everything is what It's thinking. There we go. Okay. So this is just the landing page for our website. I'll talk a little about the chamber, but mostly we're going to go to the economic development site. So this will be the homepage, has the quick links to everything that they use us for on the chamber side, so there's directory, our phone numbers, really cool picture of the airport there behind it. And if you scroll down, it's, you know, the chamber website. But what I wanted to do is, this year for... Or this time around for economic development, we provide our economic development site as its own microsite within ours, and we're pretty excited about it, whereas currently right now, there's a dropdown and you have to kind of search through a few things. So if you'll notice right up here, if a site selector comes to our website, or if one of our local citizens is looking to grow or expand their company, and they click on economic development, normally there'd be a dropdown. Now it just forces you to a microsite within our website, and it's thinking.
Justin, can I interrupt you for a second? Would you say that doing a website is having to be this easy for a site selector's feedback that you've received?
Yeah.
As far as when people make that initial thought into Stillwater, Oklahoma, and go to a website like this, they want to be able to just click on something and then be able to see it immediately rather than search through and...
Yeah, I appreciate the lob there. Thank you. Yeah, so in economic development and site selection, website is one of the most important pieces to the whole process. Most of the time, the site selectors go to our website, pour through our data, whether it be demographics, available sites, before they even get to us or even get to an RFP process. So having a clean, concise, user-friendly website is almost more important than our RFP response, and nothing on Trenton's beautiful cover letter, but usually the website is far more important, so yes. So to that end, when they click on ours, if you'll notice, most of the chamber branding has kind of wiped away. We're trying to declutter it, so that way it's specific to startups, companies that are existing that are growing, as well as the site selectors there. So that's why those three tabs up at the top there, they can go specifically to the site that they want, as well as we've removed on the staff side, all of the other staff that would be kind of the chamber side. We want them to focus in on who they... How they get ahold of us right there. So if you'll also notice, we tried to keep some similar themes and colors and everything that the city has on their website. So you'll notice we kind of borrowed this section from the city website. We want site selectors to see that the city, the Visitors Bureau, the chamber are all kind of singing the same song, as well as some, you know, locations there, so.
Which is called good branding.
You could probably teach a class on that. So that's all I wanted to show with you. I know I started talking about it earlier in the year that we were embarking on a website project, and we're hoping to go live with this in January. This was the easy part. Now I'm finding out the hard part is plugging in all the content, and so we're in content-plugging phase, if that's the technical term from Stratcom.
It's technical. We get it.
Justin, I would like to just make one point. I do... I am not a millennial. I do appreciate good, easy-to-access and traverse websites, and good cover letters are always nice. I think the primary piece of marketing Stillwater, though, is personal attention.
Mm-hmm.
And personal attention face-to-face, real people, and not just... I mean, we spoke at Standing in the Bagel Shop the other day and for quite some time. People who are passionate about Stillwater, passionate about their own particular contribution to Stillwater and the thing that they love about Stillwater. So I hope that that does not get lost in lovely, very nicely-done websites or paper.
Noted.
If you use the metaphor of the dance, going to the dance...
Yes, ma'am.
The date, you know? If you were really in love with somebody and you wanted to date them, you wouldn't just send them your website.
Right. Yep, so as we talked about the other... Yes, we have some strategies in place on, you know, how we connect with the community through our BRE program. We think that the Edge, the entrepreneurship ecosystem, things like One Million Cups, getting everybody in the same room, you know, talking about... So those are our outreach components that we're doing on top of the website as well. But I'm open to suggestions and critique as well.
Thank you.
Does this website have the capability to figure out how many hits you get? How many people go to that site?
Yes.
So you actually can gauge in a month or quarter? And then is there a way... I mean, our follow-up, do they leave... Once they look at the website and if they're interested, then do they contact you? Or how... What's the next... Explain to me kind of the next level and next step that happens once.
Yeah, so we're...
I'd like to say, or do you contact them? So I kind of had this...
Yeah.
Do they contact you, or do you contact them?
Yeah, so historically, so we have the analytics to show activity, but we don't have the... I'm going to use the incorrect term, but like the reverse lookup component where we can see what IP address and everything. We're engaging in conversations with a company that provides that service, so that way we can see who, and we can get it down and see if it's a specific company or a site selector that repeatedly hits, as well as what part of the website they camp on. And so that way, when we do reach back, we can maybe highlight or reference some of the things that we know they've been sitting on as well.
You know, she's been coming to this page a lot.
Yep.
Can we answer any questions? Or what can... Yeah. I didn't know if that was... Had that capability.
Yes, it doesn't, but we're engaging in that.
I'm glad you're going to get that. I think that's really important because if they're interested enough to at least look through it, and we can respond to them pretty quickly, like you do when you click on something and you get an email, or you see an ad on, you know, social media or something, that's what they're doing to us.
Right.
And it works.
Right.
So I appreciate that you are going to get that in place. I think that's really important.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to take just a second and talk a little bit more about the One Million Cups event. I went to that last month and was incredibly impressed with it from the standpoint of putting people in the room who are Stillwater businesses, who are growing, trying to grow, looking to grow, looking for facilities. I mean, the information was not just, hey, here's what we do, you know, isn't it cool? It was, here's what we're doing in Stillwater, here's what we want to be doing, here's what we need. Really very helpful for connecting people in town who have resources or who, you know... Those kinds of conversations are the ones, and I think that's the whole point of this whole One Million Cups, right? It's entrepreneurs that have a cup of coffee together, figuring out what to do and how to get to the next step. I thought it was great. I think we need to get as many people as we can to those meetings because people who have land or people who have, you know, other resources available in town that are looking for, you know, what could I do with this? There are people who have businesses who are saying, you know, we're trying to do something here, and we need a facility, or we need people who with this skill set. And I think those conversations, like you said, Counselor Dullington, that that personal interaction at those kinds of events is really, really important. So I want to commend you all for promoting that event, and, you know, anything else we can do that's similar, where we get those people who have needs and people who have resources together in a room to talk, is really invaluable when it comes to keeping people and businesses here in Stillwater.
Okay, thank you. We had almost 60 at our... So it's only two events. First one was around 50. Second event had about 60, so hopefully we can keep going. Hit max. We're at the Riata Center right now, so I don't know how much more room they have, but...
I was standing at the back.
Yeah, I was standing there.
So, yeah.
And my wife might be a speaker for Dragonfly on the Main Streeter for December, so as long as she doesn't chicken out, she'll...
Justin, as you think about economic development for Stillwater, top few things that come to your mind as far as what you hope to happen, what you'd like to see Stillwater do, or what you would like to do in that role? As you've kind of... You've rounded out almost a year.
December 19th will be a year.
Yeah. So just share a little bit about what your vision is.
Yeah, so the big project on the horizon is the developing the industrial park north of town. So we have a few companies. Two of them maybe were presenters at the last One Million Cups that have expressed interest in expanding or relocating. And so getting that developed and having assets available, you know, part of... And we talked about why we don't respond to some of the RFPs, is sometimes we just don't have the asset available, whether it's a building of a certain square footage or that has unique assets maybe for food processing. And so we would like to have the assets available. That's number one. Number two, finding a way that we could help move the conversation forward with the things that are going on downtown with, you know, bid and TIF and Block 34. Those are obviously important events, you know, for me to recruit, as you all know, right? Quality of life is important just as much as can we do 2.2 million gallons of water to the site. So helping, you know, move that along would be something I think is significant to myself as well as the board. And then three, finding a way to continue to tell the stories like Midos Solutions and MaxQ and ExpoSafe, the tech transfer from OSU, you know, those MBA students that are up there, understanding that you have a plethora of technologies sitting on a shelf and professors wanting to engage you in the commercialization process. So finding a way to work with them to get more of that. And that's how we're going to get our startup activity in town. I mean, that's how we could, that's how you create a tech hub, if you will, is leveraging the research capabilities of campus. So, just off the cuff, those would be the three, I think, that if those things could happen, I would think that would be pretty fantastic.
Any other questions?
Ready to go?
Thank you so much.
Watch Boynton win in Brooklyn?
Thank you so much for the report.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you for the engaging questions.
Okay, that brings us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel. General manager.
No items, ma'am.
Trustees. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Please vote. A vote of four to zero. We are now adjourned from Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and that brings us to Stillwater Utilities Authority. I call the meeting to order. Trustees, on the consent docket, does anyone wish to have an item clarified, to pull an item, or is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item number D, bid recommendation for high-voltage line clearance, tree trimming, and tree removal services, just for clarification.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items one through three?
Motion to approve the first three items, minus D.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first three items, minus item four. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket, minus item four, is approved. And we do have a speaker on public comment on agenda, and the speaker is Nate with Nate's Tree Service. If you would come forward and say your name and your address, and...
Okay, hi, I'm Nate Priest with Nate's Tree Service, and we're located at 2220 East Sixth Avenue here in Stillwater. And I just kind of found out that this was coming up for discussion, so I didn't prepare a big speech or anything, but I just have been informed that there's going to be some discussion about whether to extend a contract for the electric line clearance, or whether to rebid it. And I would just, I have some thoughts on that. I've, of course, been, I've had the tree service for 17 years, so I've seen a lot of activity, and I know kind of the situation with the tree trimming contract for the city. And it's set up in such a way that makes it really difficult for any local contractors to bid on it at all, because of the structure of the contract itself. So, first of all, I'd like to encourage the council to consider rebidding the tree trimming contract, and if it's too late to do so, I understand. I think it just through, as an extension, through June 30th of next year. So, my company's finally big enough now that we could maybe, you know, bid at the way it's structured now, but there's not really any performance basis in the contract. It's all about number of crews that are out there, and I've seen in the past, a very minimal amount of work being done by those crews, but they get paid, you know, it's over a million dollars a year for the contract, and I don't think the city has gotten the best value for their money. But it's hard for local contractors to bid, okay, I'm going to have three crews out there with a bucket truck and a chipper on each crew, and for X amount per day. It's a very, very low amount. But if the crews are productive, and there's a performance component to the contract, then we could, the city could get a lot more done for the same or less money, and keep the business and all that money local. My company, I've got 12 employees, so that's 12, you know, local families that are being supported, and we're Stillwater-based. A lot of our money stays here, and I just think it'd be a good thing for the community to think about that, so, that's what I had.
Trustees, questions?
So, you weren't, you haven't bid on this contract in the past?
No.
Because of the way it's structured?
Right. I was always intimidated. You've got to have so many backup emergency crews on hand for storms, which makes sense. But there's ways to restructure that, that, I mean, now I could, my company's at the point now, yes, I could have those backup crews and that backup equipment available, but it was intimidating, and I, you know, I just, I think some kind of performance component needs to be in there, or some kind of, you know, more oversight. But I mean, I can guarantee, if we had the contract, that we would be out there working steadily and giving the city the best bang for their buck, but just things to consider.
Sure, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to items removed from the consent docket. So, we go back to item four, and Ms. Rick Nichols, is there anything else?
This has been a difficult item. It's been before you, this is the third time now. And we had a bid prior to May for the beginning of the fiscal year, and then we had another one, I believe in August, another bid, round of bids, and we've been without that service since July 1. It's council's call on what you would like to do. I believe you had the opportunity to bid both previous times. Is that correct?
Did we contact them to bid? No?
Okay.
Trustees?
Lauren, would you mind kind of, just talking about the process and what?
You bet, you bet. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director, and I agree with Nate. There were some serious issues with our tree trimming crew that we had previously under contract, and their performance was lacking, and that's why they were the low bidder on the first bid, and we said, no, we've seen what you can do, and now we're moving on. And then, the second time, they came back and basically said, you know, this new contract will be handled out of a different office, not Oklahoma City. Now, it'll be the Tulsa office, or vice versa, I can't remember exactly, but they actually wrote us a letter stipulating how they would remedy all of the issues that we had with them in the past. The performance that Nate speaks of will be handled through a performance bond, and now that will be strictly managed. If they fall short of what they need to do, we'll simply call the performance bond, and that will compensate us for the issues that we have with them. So, the, we're hopeful to get a crew in here, five crews that can work, that are guaranteed to work every week, and have emergency crews in the background. And that's the key, right? So, when the big windstorm comes in and everything's on the ground, we need all the support we can get. So, I believe everybody had a, you know, we advertised in the news press and online, and, you know, we did everything that's required to notify potential bidders, and we would, we welcome any bid. We're, at this point, we'll take any and all, but...
So, this would be just to finish, obviously, to finish out this fiscal year, and as, do we need to look at how those, how the process is done, so that, you know, it'd be nice to support local business, but there's also no guarantee when you go through the bid process, that what the lowest bid is going to be and who's going to, so I understand that, but do we need to look at that process and see if there needs to be?
We possibly could. I believe the idea behind the three-year, it's not a guaranteed three-year term. Every year, we have to come back and make a recommendation and get approval for the next, so it's performance-based. If you're, if we look at this first six months of service, and five months down the road, and we say, this isn't, you're not working out, we're going to make a recommendation to come back, do you terminate the contract? And it's kind of our out, rather than having a three-year contract that we're committed to, each year, we come back and get approval. So, there's another performance mechanism, and that's what it's there for, rather than being committed to a full three years.
So, the last two reasons why it's up to us again, isn't necessarily about the process, just about the company itself, and then their inability to?
Yes, ma'am. The first time, we went with the second lowest bidder, Baco, and they ended up not being able to supply the performance, to supply the bonding that we require. And this also happened the second time. We went back, we went with Askin, and then they flat said, we're not going to put up the bonding, the performance bonding. And so, that is, for lack of a better word, the hammer that we can go back with and say, you're not, you know, you're not performing as per the contract, and we can call that bond. And so, with Davies, we had contacted them, and we went right down the list, will you supply us this? And they have confirmed, yes, that we will supply all the bonding and all that, so...
And this would be for beginning right now, and go for one year, or till the end of June?
Just till June 30th. Yes, ma'am.
And then it opens up again, and?
Well, and sometime in May, we would come back to you and make the recommendation to extend the contract for the second year, or rebid. And that happens for every three years of the contract. So, really, it's two and a half years now, because we're already halfway into this fiscal year.
What's involved in if, at this point, instead of taking the next lowest bidder, right? Because that's the question we have on this agenda item, is whether we just move to the next lowest bidder, or we could potentially open it up and rebid now?
Right, we could, we could not choose Davies and rebid the project.
What's involved if we had to rebid it at this point?
Mostly effort and time. So, we're probably looking at another 30 days out before we get back to you. You know, we'll bid for 20 days, and then evaluate for 10. So, we're looking probably 30, 45 more days till we're back here to go, okay, we've reviewed the bid, and everything is right. Because Nate's right, they're complicated. They're complicated bids, there's a lot of details, and not everybody can fully commit to that. So, without having a bid from Nate, I'm not aware what we would find in there, that, so I can't guarantee that we're going to come back and go, oh, well, and then, at the same time, we can't guarantee the prices aren't going to go up either. So, we're kind of...
It's also a conundrum here.
Yes, ma'am.
On this side, because, you know, how many times did we say shop local?
Yeah.
This is Small Business Week, or, I mean, it's really frustrating to want to have local businesses do our business, and I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, given that it's, if we rebid now, it's going to be February before we've got another, and then it still only goes to the end of June.
Right.
To me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it now. What makes sense to me is that if we, if we look into this issue around the contract and see if, you know, if there's something that, if we get to the end of fiscal year and we want to rebid then, and we figured out a way to make it, you know, make more sense for local bidders to be able to get into it, then, you know, we can make that decision at the end of the fiscal year for the new, the new cycle.
How long has it been since we've had tree trimming?
July 1st.
So, we need it now.
We really do. It's so important, and we are just falling far behind.
Right around the ice season. Hopefully, no ice, but...
You're exactly right.
All right, is...
So, I'd make a motion at this point to approve the recommendation from the consent item at this point.
Is there a second?
It's a tough one.
That is a tough one. And there's, it has to stay within this fiscal year, correct, Lauren? So, we couldn't reopen a bid, resend this, and reopen a bid and have it extend into a next, to the next year? It would happen to complete this year, and then?
That's not standard. I think, and John may back me up here, I can...
Okay, I just, because it's right, the timing, the timing is not...
That's my only, I would like to see it happen, but we're going to be...
And I hope that you will bid.
Mm-hmm.
We do it again in the next fiscal year? I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept item four, the bid recommendation on the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of three to one, that is approved. That brings us to reports from officers and boards. Miscellaneous items from general counsel, Mr. Dorman.
Requesting executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B4 for the purpose